This time we're going to start the review session of agenda. We have an ordinance, ordinance 05101, an ordinance to amend or supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 12, streets, sidewalks, and public places. This is an ordinance in first reading. We don't have any more ordinances for second reading. We go into resolutions. Resolution 05101, it's a resolution to approve agenda amendments. Resolution 05102, approve payroll, boy thirteen thirteen to fourteen six thirteen. Resolution 05103, authorize vehicle for beginning tax sale certificates. Resolution 04, approve emergency temporary appropriations for 2013. Resolution 05, approve request for use of city property requested by Livingston Elementary School. The location is one of the square park for musical concert performance in the park by the Livingston Elementary School band students on Friday, June 7th, 2013, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Resolution 06, approve request for street closing. This is requested by Armani York, my partner, RC Church. Street location, Morris Street, Livingston Avenue, to New Street, George Street, return to Morris Street, Church Street, Church entrance, public just possession in celebration of the trees of the Corpus Christi on Sunday, June 2nd, 2013, from 12:45 p.m. to 1:30. Resolution 07, approve request for street closing requested by the University else, 324, Livingston Avenue between New and Morris Street, for Arrow else, which will commemorate Flag Day, Friday, June 14th, 2013, from 11:30 to 12:30. Resolution 08, approve request for use of city park, city property requested by New Guinea Delivery City. The location is Street Park for a summer of peace and food, music, theater, and performances on Saturday, August 10th, 2013. Park usage time, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Basketball court time from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Resolution 09, approve authorization to repeat requested by the senior center resource center for two quarters for the senior center. Resolution 010, approve amendment of resolution 01139, the recent state contract changes. Resolution authorizing contract with certain approved state contract vendors for contracting units pursuant to New Jersey S.A., Fong A, Eleven, Twelve A. Resolution 011, authorize payment for emergency procurement department of planning, community, and economic development for emergency housing shelter for Sonny Scott of 256 11th Street with Wallstar Group in doing business as Albert Johnson Express Inc., not to exceed $160. Resolution 012, authorize payment for emergency procurement department of planning, community, and economic development for emergency housing shelter for Samuel Franco Look Lovewood of 197 French Street with Wallstar Group in doing business as Albert Johnson Express Inc., not to exceed $1,242. Resolution 013, approve award contract with Guarda Constitution Center for transmission of first services for the police department. It's a term of two months, beginning May 2nd, 2013, and ending on May 1st, 2014, not to exceed $50,000. Resolution 014, reappointment to housing authority of the Alcado expires on April 2nd, 2018. This is not full term.
That's because of his other term expired on April 2nd of this year. And he is of the seven members. He is the one who was appointed by council rather than by mayor or by advice consent or by vote.
Resolution 015, approve request for use of city property requested by Highside Martini. Location, Google Park, Juggin Park, and Pavilion for five K walk front to those money for Grace Kids Foundation on Saturday, October 19th, 2013, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Resolution 016, approve amendment of resolution 041339, approve request for use of city sidewalk requested by Food and Water Watch. Street location change, Morris Street, New Street, Patrick, Irish Street, Alba, Yen Houston Avenue for March against Monsanto on Saturday, May 25th, 2013, the rain day, Sunday, May 26th. The time change is from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Resolution 017, approve of progress, Raffael at the Srest Park to United Church Street on New Brunswick for Christina Bosch Breast Cancer Foundation on October 20th, 2013. Resolution 018, approve award of contract with North Sea Improvement for truck and equipment replacement parts. The term is eleven months, starting May 2nd, 2013, and ending on March 20th, 2014, not to exceed $0.60,000. Resolution 019, approve request of street closing requested by Michael Rule. Location, El Road from Harrison Street to buyer's street for the Taste of downtown festival. This is on Sunday, June 2nd, 2013, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. With a rain day on Sunday, June 9th, 2013, the reset that duly is required.
Madam Council President, if you expected this one, this is much more far-reaching. And I had realized this, it just borrowed my attention. But additionally, there was left out a provision about insurance. Now, having retyped ordinance that you adopted, this in there, language that says that Mike Boo Boo, which of a team general liability shows me standard language, kind of having waited hours and performed satisfied, that the satisfactory city clerk can violate certificate, not affect $48 of the debt. So, we rebate hence we consider this in there, and the council rejected soon.
Thank you. Resolution 0120, approve request for street closing requested by Hung Garble Civic Association. Location, Bethany Street, Somerset Street to Endor Heritage Center property. Plum Street, Somerset Street to 66 Plum Street, Somerset Street, Bethany Street to Division Street for the Amazon Gary Festival on Saturday, June 1st, 2013, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. For this is to be required. Resolution 0121, approve amendment to resolution 071243, authorize incredible sharing agreement, interval of services agreement with Minister's Handicaper's office for purchase and installation of street surveillance cameras. Resolution 0122, authorize application, acceptance, and execution of grant with County of Minister's Office of Aging for informational assistance in your citizen resource center. Amount to be received $5,000. Resolution 0123, authorize application, acceptance, and execution of grant with County of Minister's Office of Aging Congregate Hill Senior Citizen Resource Center. Amount to be received $10,000. Resolution 0124, resolution to authorize execution of talents toward utility easement with St. Peter's University Hospital for 254 and 240 Easton Avenue Transformer Replacement. Resolution 0124, approve amendment of resolution 121205, change order number one with WHL Enterprises in trading as Gilby Air Conditioning and Heating for air conditioning unit replacement at City Hall. Amount 504. Approval of this change order will not constitute a new lease of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Resolution 0126, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by Temple Development Corporation. Location, Remsen Avenue, Fire and Security Center from May 2nd, 2013, to August 31st, 2013, Saturdays, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. With date evenings from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Resolution 0127, approve issuance of taxi owner licenses for taxis 44 and 45. Number 44 is Nieman Ozzy, number 45 Marie Beaumont Soar. Resolution 0128, approve amendment of resolution 091037, the CMA associate for Remsen Avenue, every store improvement, Rist Street, on the life, Sanita, it's only for two other. Amount $67,270. Approval of this change order will constitute a new lease of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Resolution 0129, authorize reuse of performance guarantee to Paula Brothers School for 169 Collishawney Sidewalk permanent. The amount is $10,598.23. Resolution 0130, authorize reuse of performance guarantee to University of Pedestrian Industry Street of New Jersey for road opening target. The amount is $6,123.90. Resolution 0131, approve request for use of city property requested by Universal Education Lincoln Elementary School. The location in Google Park, Patagonia Mansion on for Lincoln School Field Day on Thursday, June 13th, 2013, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. With the rain day of Monday, June 21st. Resolution 0132, approve award of contract with Top Line Construction for Collishawney Road improvements not to exceed $302,000. Resolution 0133, approve amendment of resolution 061226, change order number 13. This is final with Blackrock Enterprises for George Street beautification phase two construction and the amount is $519.50. Approval of this change order will not constitute a new lease of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Resolution 0134, approve resolution to authorize refund for escrow deposit to 258 Easton Avenue, Urban Reo. The amount is $2,036.35. Resolution 0135, resolution for introduction of the New Brunswick City Market 2013 project. Resolution 0136, authorize tax collect for transfer credits on several tax and utility accounts. Resolution 0137, approve amendment of resolution 041230, change order number one with Jeff Construction LLC for South Pennington Road pump station improvement. The amount is $13,731.91. Approval of this change order will not constitute a new lease of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Resolution 0138, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance and low closure requested by Restore Ford Inc., the reason to set move top equipment at the Skyline Towers. Low closure portion of Harrison Street on Saturday, May 4th, 2013, with alternate date of Saturday, May 11th, 2013, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Resolution 0139, approve amendment of resolution 041351, approve request of city properties, change of dates and times. Requested by Gabriel Flores, location, Vista Park Basketball Course or Men's Basketball Team, Sundays, May 5th to July 28th, 2013. Rain day, Sundays, over 4th to September 29th, 2013. The time is from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
You may remember that earlier resolution itself until the additional nature worked out, is going to read in the next few dates and times in the head pad for the form for each of the ways to do our work.
And the fees because he wasn't aware of that. I do for discussion by council. We have one, is the resolution in support of tuition equity legislation.
Give you a copy of that proposed resolution, please. Patent, I have issued a copy here, it was a proposal.
At this time, the meeting is called to order.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Council Vice President Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Garladi.
Present.
Council President Escobar.
Here. Please be advised that the knowing requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act has been clarified and satisfied in that the not annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public news of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate polling board in the local city home in Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely, the Home Industry Year. Rachel Valdez.
I salute you to the flag of the United States of America and to your beloved and fortunate stands, one nation under God, in the global, 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 global.
It's time to pass one moment to one of those Americans and African who has lost their license and what he has done. Thank you. Have you seen our document, motion to object minutes of April 17th, so.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
We have an ordinance on first reading, ordinance 05101, is an ordinance to amend or supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 12, streets and sidewalks, public places. I move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, May 15th, same date, the other part for the public hearing.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
At this time, we have resolution 01 to resolution 039. Does any member of the public wishes to address the council on any of these specific resolutions? Is the public's name and address.
Those Academy's address, St. Anthony, Brunswick, New Jersey. In reference to 324, can somebody explain what the recordable storm sewer easement to the city of New Brunswick is for? And if it's in any way related to the problems that are on Jefferson Avenue with the storm sewer and sanitary sewer mixing at times?
Is it voting, would I have to address them?
No, they, this is on Delafield. They had come in, allowed back to install a transformer on their property because they were bringing in the voltage from another area across town, a higher voltage that they needed. As a result of that, application, we have an existing storm sewer that runs across their property. And we just asked them to give us an easement for that storm sewer and make sure then that whatever improvements they do make in the way of other underground utility work on their property do not interfere with our ability to get back to our storm sewer.
Thank you.
So, it's an existing pipe. We just got an easement on top of it.
Thank you. Any other background of the public, yes, Mr. Crowe.
Yeah, Charles Crowe, Billy, he, Plum Street in Brunswick. On number 14, please don't take this the wrong way, not in indictment of Mr. Caldwell or his performance on the Board of Education or the Housing Authority Board. I just wanted to ask you if there is a conflict of interest in Mr. Caldwell serving on both of those bodies.
If he's serving, they shouldn't be, because those are local individuals, we do for an entities.
Number 27, new taxi licenses. Could somebody explain how much they were sold for and also to which companies they had to go on?
They could stem out of the resolution that clerk concluded the number that are.
License number 44 was sold for $65,000 to Nieman Ozzy. License number 45 was sold to Marie Beaumont Soar for $70,000.
And are those two individuals affiliated with either the cap companies that have done?
Yes, they are. I just don't recall which ones.
Mr. Ozzy is with Yellow Taxi, and I don't know where he was, I'm sure he was.
But it's one of the ones, it's already licensed.
The five of it's already listed, yes.
Okay. And then, last one is, could somebody just explain number 34 to me, the refund, why is that going through?
That's the one that, 25th Avenue, everything you know. The, we know.
...to north connecting to twenty-seven north. Because of the high volume of traffic, those phone breaks have crumbled. They're all over the place, they're in little pieces. There are now potholes there. There's also another pothole at the right, you may, the access road out to eighteen south by the Hyatt from Alden Street. Also because of the high volume of traffic and trucks. You're using this company again. We're probably the same result using that. They should just make that a blacktop instead of for the aesthetic of having faux bricks, which doesn't serve any purpose other than looking pretty. And why is that company being used? Or why are they not being called to account for that problem down there?
There's a maintenance on the contract. There's a maintenance on the contract. It's in the release here.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
If the ones down by Route eighteen were done by the NJ DOT as part of the Route eighteen expansion and improvement. The ones we did on George Street were a totally different process, different contractor, different point in time.
Same, it's not the same product, no.
Same process though?
No, totally different. I said, pardon me? Totally different. But it was, was it, they used the same process as the other company?
He just said that he said different process.
It's the same, man. If you go down there, it's the same process as here. It's the same.
Okay. Anybody else which would address the council on any of the specific resolutions that we have, that we just mentioned? Have you heard, can I make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
You abstain from, Mr. Fleming has abstained from the resolution.
And we're also doing the one resolution upon the insurance. You have talked about the street, the insurance. You said with the H W DeBrunto festival on top of that.
Yes, that one, we can change this.
You're considering that as amended and you're doubting that as a part of the act?
Yes, that's what I said.
I move the resolution.
You have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barlatti.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. At this time before we go into the Irish police discussions, I just want to give a very good summary of some of the concerns that were brought up to the council at the last meeting. Speeding on Joyce Comer Avenue, the police department is working on directing patrol to start going into Joyce Comer Avenue. On the speed rider trailer, he's been deployed into Joyce Comer Avenue. Captain Miller, if you wish to address or say something about this, I'll be sufficient to what I just said.
The speed trailer is out there honoring the rate of speed of people then given in the flash report again. We also have officers out there issuing summonses to speeders.
The other one, there was a concern about that there was not enough speed home signage on Joyce Comer Avenue. People were out there that we inspected, there's enough signs all through Joyce Comer Avenue. I myself last night coming from the middle school, I was counting all the signs of this big limit of this big home and there's more than ten on Joyce Comer Avenue starting from the University Middle School to Sanford. That's where I started. There was some other issues that were brought by the vice, and he's not here, so I'm just going to refrain from making any comments on that. That's about it. In terms of the, we want, yes, Mr. Han.
You've got the one resolution in discussion?
Yes, we have one now. I just wanted to do this before we go into that. There is a resolution for the council to discuss this decision. It's a resolution in support of tuition equity, legislation that is actually probably in the legislature. Just to give you a little background of why it's here, but some of you might be asking why is the city council getting involved with this, why they're asking us to support this? There's two bills, like I said before, the legislature, one bill is sixteen fifty-nine S twenty-three fifty-five, and the other one is thirty-five oh nine S twenty-four seventy-seven, and like I mentioned, it's tuition equity bills. And this is something that has been going on in the state, it's a discussion that has been going on in the state, in the nation. And for some people that say, why New Brunswick, why should we get involved? I personally support this. Just so we have to remember that in New Brunswick, according to the census data, New Brunswick has a population of forty-nine point nine Latinos. Besides that, thirty-six point two percent of those Latinos that are in New Brunswick are foreign born. The school system in New Brunswick has more than eighty percent of students who are of Latino descent. That's overall, some schools have more than ninety percent representation of Latinos in their schools. So saying that, yes, I believe that this is an issue that affects our kids every day, it's an issue that is happening, that we are spending money supporting these kids through their education from K to twelve. I personally believe that we put them at a disadvantage if we ask them to pay double rates, even though they have been resident of New Brunswick, of New Jersey, of the state, to pay double for their tuition towards school. On that note, there are some members of the New Jersey Coalition, Dreamers Coalition here, they were, they were approached with, I know they want, some of them Cynthia Cruz are here this year, who wants to address the council on this matter. So just stay with me, address and establish discussion.
Good afternoon, my name is Cynthia Cruz, I reside on one ninety-two Dela Brant Street. Just a little, give a little bit of background how this bill affects me. I was brought into the city of New Brunswick at the age of twenty-two months, so close to two years. And I went to grammar school on Barton Street, from kindergarten through eighth grade at Lincoln, a little school called Lincoln School. And so when I reached eighth grade is when I found out that I was undocumented because I was actually chosen to attend a private Rutgers preparatory school full ride for high school. And so due to me being undocumented, I did not qualify for the scholarship to move on to a private high school. So I settled for, I went to New Brunswick High School, and I excelled, not as much as I could have because I knew I was undocumented. Once into high school, I graduated, and so what was the next step? Middlesex. Luckily, Middlesex did not charge me out of state tuition rates. But once I transferred into Rutgers, Rutgers, the first semester, my tuition bill was close to fourteen thousand dollars, even though I was residing in the city of New Brunswick for the last nineteen years of my life. This is an issue that is affecting not only myself, but thousands across the city of New Brunswick, and hundred thousand across the state of New Jersey, and it's an issue that needs to be fixed at a state level. I know there is a lot of concerns of being mixed up with a local, federal, and now this is an issue, the root cause can start here, and that's how the bill is very important to myself, to my colleagues, to a lot of my peers, and it's just something that will help us excel through education and out of poverty.
And was there a little bit of a deal spicy that you're asking the council to support?
City Council President, if I may step in for Cynthia. My name is Marissa Conde Hernandez, I was resident of New Brunswick for seven years, but recently moved to Somerset. I've been following this bill that we've deemed the New Jersey Tuition Equity for Dreamers bill for about eight years, have also been an activist for the Dream Act at the federal level. The bill before the state legislature, there were two, but the one that we're campaigning for specifically is Assembly Bill Thirty-five oh nine. The bill, in its most simple language, I can say, is a bill that says that if you, any student, if you are a student that attended a high school in New Jersey for at least three years, that graduates from a high school in the state of New Jersey, or receives a GED in the state of New Jersey, you would qualify to pay in-state tuition rates at public universities in the state of New Jersey, like Rutgers, like King, like Monmouth State University. But if you're undocumented, you would have to not only sign an affidavit to the state promising to adjust your immigration status whenever you get the possibility to do so, and you have to demonstrate that you applied for deferred action, which is a federal executive order that was given by President Obama on June fifteenth of two thousand and twelve. If you meet all those eligibility requirements, then again, you would pay in-state tuition, and this bill also calls for state aid, just eligibility. The importance behind this bill is that in New Jersey, we have the fifth highest number of undocumented immigrants in the country, the fifth highest. And up to now, with, according to data from USCIS, we have about forty thousand young people who apply for deferred action that are residents of the state of New Jersey. So as of right now, we have about forty thousand that are currently trying to, that are graduates of high school in New Jersey, or are currently in high school, that are potential college students, that are effectively barred from attending institutions of higher education simply because they're being charged double the tuition rates of a normal New Jersey resident, even though, like Cynthia, they've grown up and lived in the state of New Jersey. As of right now, we have three municipalities across the state, Passaic, Jersey City, and Plainfield, that have passed resolutions in support of this bill. We have hundreds of civic, religious, and social organizations and institutions that have signed a letter of support, and our goal is to try to get this bill passed through the legislature before budget, if not during the lame duck session. Because anything that happens in Congress with federal immigration reform will not address the issue of the undocumented students to pay, of them paying twice as much at a public universities. This bill does not call for any kind of special privileges to admission or discounted rates, it simply would let them pay in-state rates as residents, because currently they're being charged as non-residents of the state, even though they've paid income taxes, property taxes, still taxes in the state of New Jersey.
Anybody else want to talk, which is to address the council on this matter?
My name is Jose Sebaja, I live in one seventy-one Seaman Street. I've been living in New Brunswick since two thousand. I attended the New Brunswick Public School District. Since then, I graduated high school number one in my class, and thankfully, I was given a full ride tuition to Rutgers University, where I obtained a degree in economics and mathematics. This is very important for me and my colleagues as well, because as I come back to the high school, I see that there's a lack of incentive for students to continue on to pursue higher education. And this is very important, why? Because I think there's a correlation with gang-related issues and drugs in the city. I'm sure Captain Miller will probably agree with me, and there has been an increase in violence in the city, and if not, I welcome you all to walk to the streets in Ramson Avenue and Livingston Avenue at nine P M, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, where there's, has been a big issue in violence. Giving kids an incentive for them to go to school, I think is a very important thing for, as a civilized society to do. These kids have been living here, this is their community, their parents are here, they don't know nothing else but New Jersey, the U S, New Brunswick. Thank you.
Anybody else want to talk, which is to address the council? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Diana Sanderson, I live at one thirty-one Livingston Avenue in New Brunswick, and I'm actually a teacher here in New Brunswick, I teach kindergarten through eighth grade, and so I can speak to the daily life of trying to give students the incentive to move on to higher education. We are told through all of these studies that giving students the opportunity and the motivation to go to college is very, it encourages them and it makes them better students. And so, well, we try to do that, and we try to tell students that this is, this is something that is an option for them, and so your support of this resolution can help, is a support of our students in New Brunswick, and to help them actually achieve things like first in your class and graduate of college.
Is the question answered?
Have the people who have graduated and stuff like that, I know it's still intends that they intend to normalize their immigration status, I don't have any dealings with that or any problems in doing that?
Well, currently as it stands, the affidavit that this bill requires is a message to the state that the student has an intent to adjust immigration status. The reason why the sixty-five thousand students that graduate from high schools every year in the country are not able to adjust their status is because of the big bureaucracy, outdated, inefficient system that is immigration, it is immigration policy which is being reviewed and revised hopefully this year. Many students don't have, either because they're underage, they obviously can't apply to adjust their status by themselves, they have no N that is required to do so via the current immigration system, and those that do have to face either three or ten-year bars because of a law in nineteen ninety-six, I R I R, that required that someone who violates and overestands their visa or came in without a visa has to wait at least three or ten years if they were here without status. And also, one that is not as mentioned as much, is that a lot of these families can't afford the fees and they can't afford the attorneys to adjust their immigration status.
Can you talk about, why is the difference in when you guys do the deferred action?
Deferred Action is a federal program that essentially allows, if you qualify and you apply, and you get granted deferred action, it is merely Homeland Security's way of saying, we acknowledge your presence in the United States, and you are still undocumented, but we will not actively pursue you for deportation for a period of two years. Deferred Action can be renewed every two years, and the greatest promise or asset to anybody who receives deferred action is employment authorization. So young people like Jose and Cynthia, who received deferred action, they're now also legally able to work within the country. So as college graduates, they now have an advantage, and they can seek jobs that will actually use their skill set that they developed while they were in college, which otherwise, without this program, they would still work in very low-wage, low-skill sectors.
Anybody else want to talk, which is to address the council?
Hi, my name is Karina Wilkinson. I'm here on another matter, but I just want to say that I have, since two thousand and nine, co-founded two different visiting programs in county jails, both Middlesex and Monmouth, which gratefully no longer house immigrant detainees. But I just have to say that, you know, I also support, you're supporting statewide legislation, I support what these folks are doing, and they are amazingly brave to come and say, you know, step forward as many dreamers have across the country, exposing themselves to what is a really horrible detention system and deportation system.
Anybody else want to add a question, please?
Yes, my name is Cynthia Martinez, and I was born and raised in New Brunswick, out of the Bronx, just on Ramston Avenue. Just wanted to tell you my experience growing up with undocumented friends. When I entered elementary school, I attended bilingual classes because my parents wanted me to learn how to read, write, and converse in Spanish. Though I shared secrets with my friends at school, having documented relatives, we found one of them. Not so much because I refused to talk about it, but because it was not a secret. Everyone knew that everyone in our class had relatives who did not enter the U S untrained. Nobody made a big deal about it, and I didn't realize that anyone did until middle school. I went from bilingual to monolingual classes and was exposed to new cultures that were not so nonchalant about undocumented immigrants. Now I had a secret. It was from this point on that I heard many discriminatory comments and jokes mostly directed at Mexicans or quote-unquote Mexicans, meaning every other Latino, especially those who spoke little to no English. I still do not understand their feeling of superiority, being citizens of the United States did not make them better students than the documented ones. As the years went by, and I entered high school, I entered, I mean, I started to notice this from my little faces. In general, some of the high school students drop out, but in my experience, those who are undocumented did so because they felt they had limited resources to reach their dreams. They subdued to their feelings of hopelessness and lack of support. Like many, like them, many undocumented students, big dreams became broken ones. Many have been discouraged from the DECO, but there are a few who are consistent and the ones who not only envision their future, but are paving their path towards it, transcending expectations of overcoming discrimination and refusing to give up when another door closes. The youthful spirit is strong one, but, and their drive to succeed even stronger, but it is essential to help these students maintain their zeal and give them equal opportunities to attend college. My friends and I have lived in the same city for as long as I can remember. We have attended the same schools and graduated from the same high school. We have received the same education. Now please help them just have the same opportunities that I have to attend college and pay the same tuition I pay.
Anybody else? Name of address?
I'm here to speak on another matter as well, Caitlin Daxino, I live in Jameson A three oh six, Cook, I'm close to me, I think it's on the corner of Jones.
Nobody else can talk about this, I said that?
Yes, that's right. I'd just like to say that if all of these people are here, and they've been here for nineteen, twenty, eighteen years, I don't think they're leaving, and I think that they do want to contribute to this country and help it to become a better place. And I think that especially here in New Brunswick, there are so many Latino and Latina children that are here, and I've, you know, lived in the same neighborhood as, in off-campus housing at one point. And they're all just really bright, these children that are here, and they're so motivated to do well, and, you know, it's amazing, you know, to see these kids and how they're aspiring, you talk to them, to be doctors and lawyers and basketball players and all things, and it's really great to feed off of that energy. But I think that here and in the rest of New Jersey, they should have this equal opportunity, because if they haven't left, they want to get back to New Jersey, they want to make this country better. And we can't do that unless we allow them, you know, this equal opportunity, at least give them the equal opportunity for tuition, because just as much as I'm a human being, they are too, and they're, you know, a New Jersey resident. So they should be paying equal, so it doesn't make any sense to me why not.
Anybody else which is to address the council? Yes, did I? Name of address, please?
My name is Tommy Shider, and I do that seven eleven Anna Place in North Platteville, New Jersey, but I have worked in New Brunswick for the last thirty-five years. A lot of the students that are in here, I've seen them when they came knowing this much English, zero English. And now I work in the bilingual office as the ESL specialist, and I would like to say we have come together and began to do positive things, incentives for the students to progress within New Brunswick through our bilingual program. We now have a scholarship, we have a recipient of the scholarship, Maria, right here, for her excellence in, just the fact that she participated in the bilingual ESL program. And I think this is a very interesting story, because what really amazed us about Maria is how she advocated for herself, because one of the criterias for the Joan Bornheimer Scholarship, and I'm sure a lot of people here know who Joan Bornheimer was, she was the director of the bilingual ESL program for many, many years. In fact, she was in the program, she was in the district for fifty-four years, and that's why the scholarship that started as the bilingual scholarship eventually ended up as the Joan Bornheimer Memorial Scholarship. But what I really admired about Maria is when we were interviewing candidates for the scholarship, one of the requirements was that you had to have been a part of the ESL bilingual program. And so we did not see any documentation about her being a part of the bilingual program. However, she said, I did go through the bilingual program, this was my teacher, this was my ESL teacher. The fact that she brought that information, she brought it on her own, herself, really spoke a lot about her, and then when we had to interview, we interviewed quite a few people, she ended up winning the scholarship, which was very impressive. So, I mean, here she is now, she's in, and she's in Middlesex. I mean, here's a student who started knowing zero, Jose Sebaja. I'm a witness of what he has done. I remember when he came, like I said, I've been here for thirty-five years, so I've seen the kids come up for the ring. So what I did also, I said, well, you know what, we need to acknowledge these kids academically. So what did I do? Once I got the position in the bilingual office, I proposed to have an academic Hall of Fame. We are now in our ninth year, and I remember Jose was acknowledged as one of the recipients of the academic Hall of Fame. It acknowledges the students, the seniors, we're going to acknowledge again this June, who have a three-point-four GPA, and they're going on to college. So we've already started acknowledging what these kids can do. If we're working collaboratively, we can make sure that they're the next doctors, the next lawyers. So I'm just here to support them, let them know I am a hundred percent behind them, I've seen them grow, and I know they have so much more to give New Brunswick if we give them more to go with.
Anybody else want to address which is to talk about? Decision? Do you still agree? So the vote for even better?
Second, motion is accepted.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barlatti.
Abstain.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
Do you want to add something?
Due to my position in state government, I have to abstain from matters involving higher education.
Can I decide any other background for which is to address the council and any other matters?
I'm familiar with protocol. New Brunswick, New Jersey, Joyce Comer Avenue, one third town. I'd like to also give my support to the resolution that's, for the people I came. Also, Lisa Bornheimer was my Spanish teacher in nineteen sixty-nine, so with her name, I have to do it. But the reason I'm here today is because, since January, and we know that we marched, Weary Jockey March, called Dr. King's Birthday, and we marched to Joyce Comer and Sanford Street, and there's a painting on the mirror on the wall. And when I, when we arrived here, I realized that it needed to be repaired. And then we wanted to add some additions to it, such as Dr. King. And we wanted to put one of our drummers on there, because we're talking about inspiration, and we're talking about motivation, and we're talking about education, and it's competitive. And we want to move to the highest level, being successful. And you need things like that to motivate young children. Since then, I came down to City Hall, I spoke with Glenn Patterson, to see if the owner gave me permission to put Dr. King and the changes. But I wanted to make sure by law that we didn't violate any codes within the city. Went to planning board, went to the zoning board, and then Glenn Patterson directed me to the arts, Susan Painter, and I spoke to her last week. At first I thought I was getting run around, and I still think I'm getting run around, and I don't like it, because I wanted to move in the spirit of Dr. King, because I've always been a builder and a successful person in this city. The mirror dates back to nineteen seventy-five, when we had some, when I ran some world-class programs within the city, which is why I did Moosix County Human Commission Relation Board put the mirror up here. So Susan Painter, I spoke to her last week, and she said she didn't see anything wrong with it, and she had spoke to the charity also. I've been running back and forth, you know, and we want to get, we want to proceed on. So now Glenn Patterson's here, right? I want to know where we stand now, because I don't want any problems with the owner, I don't want any problems with the city. We want to move forward.
Which is that we were talking about, we said, does it want to Joyce Comer by?
Here it is, right here.
Yeah, who did that? Wasn't that done by the city league? A long time ago?
I traced it back, the Moosix County Human Relations Board.
But I think that the city league worked on that one, no? Because, you're adding two words.
No, it's on the wall, yeah. And what happens is that we didn't want to change the integrity of the painting, and I understand that. But Susan Painter agreed that the additional changes in the repair of the wall that we want to make is in line and good spirit. All I want to know is from Glenn Patterson, because the last time I was at the meeting, sometimes he'd get a little perturbed when somebody talked to him. And I've been dealing with this city for thirty, forty years, at the highest level, DECO, Paladino, you know, and when something of this nature means a lot to me. African-American community has contributed a lot in this community, and Dr. King was for everybody. And I'm not going to stand around and think that somebody is taking advantage, and it should be an opportunity. So from Glenn, I want to know, with the city, I want to know. All I want to know is from Glenn Patterson, because the last time I was at the meeting, sometimes he'd get a little perturbed when somebody talked to him. And I've been dealing with this city for thirty, forty years here, at the highest level, DEPCO, Paladino, you know? And when something of this nature means a lot to me. African-American community has contributed a lot in this community. And Dr. King was for everybody. And I'm not going to stand around and think that somebody is taking advantage, and it should be an opportunity. So, from Glenn, I want to know, with the city, I want to know, do I have a problem? And if there is a problem, how do we fix it so we can proceed?
Well, I'm just gonna let Mr., um, let, uh, discuss that with you, but just for that, you know, as somebody who doesn't know the ESL this summer, there is a process, and it's the committee, the Arts Council, that's why, but you already did that.
Already did that.
You have to submit them, and they have to approve.
She approved it.
Because every year, we do one in the city in different places.
She already.
So I don't know what is that, you know, the standard of practice, you may, you may as soon as you give us an update.
When Mr. Neal first approached us, we told him about the process that he had to go through, which he's followed through partially on. We've asked Mr. Neal to submit a concept drawing of what is exactly going to be on the bill. The diagram that he's given us is essentially, uh, cut out a picture of a drummer and sort of, you know, put it on the colored copy. We're asking to see exactly what is it going to look like. Out of respect for the original artists that drew this, we want to ensure that what is going to go on the wall is going to be compatible with what they're drawing. And I'm sure Mr. Neal will be doing that. But we want to have something so we can see that we can document that, so that we don't end up with something that then later generates controversy from the people who originally painted the wall.
And that's what I was.
That's not even my history. Susan Painter had a copy of this, and I spoke to her on the phone, and she said to her chairman that it was okay. So I gave her exactly this.
Because the reason I'm asking is that people have done, I had talked to the Arts Council, we have to report exactly what is it, we have to submit all of that paperwork.
Right.
And so, if they're asking, do you submit something by the artist, whoever who's want to do it, maybe that's who helped.
The artist, the photographer. Here's what we have right now. Susan Painter should report back to him and the chairman. I'm quite sure, because I spoke to her on the phone. She made a report, there should be a report, that's why I'm here, I want to document it. Once they, he don't know nothing about art. Once they said, once they said that okay, that should be enough for him, unless he want to paint it.
Well, my, my, um, again, the process that, you know, you see the fact that I have been personally advised with a program that we do, they send you a letter stating it's approved.
That's what I'm removing.
So did you receive that?
I spoke, well, he's holding it up. I spoke to her on the phone. She said she spoke, she said she spoke, they had a meeting, they went to the wall.
You had to move it all?
Yeah, they went to the wall, they looked at it, they agreed with it. It was enough for them, which I showed exactly what I wanted. And I've always been world-class. You know, I deal with DEPCO, I deal with all these people. It just seems to be the problem with Mr. Patterson here. And I want to remove that, and if the city council, I would like for you to do one or the other.
Well, I need to say, I don't make a decision for the Arts Council, that's why they're there, but you said, "I don't have anything, what I can offer is just some information, people follow up, or maybe find out," or you see, there's going to be some communication somewhere between Susan and.
Now, the council president, what I've told Mr. Neal previously at the last council meeting were almost exactly the words that you said. Submit a drawing by the artist, so you can see what the concept looks like. He's told me on multiple occasions, he has an artist that he's working with, and if we just submit a small concept, so we can see that everything fits together, and that the new additions are not going to be out of place with what is there, so we have respect for the original art, we'd be happy to move it through the process.
She already said, she already said that she agreed with it, she had enough. When I talked to her on the phone, she didn't ask for anything additional. I asked her.
But that's what I was asking you, because that's part of the process, because I don't have to worry, I just want to get a drawing.
Right, right. So we should ask for a report from them, because they already approved it. She told me, Mr. Neal already approved it. And the chairman already approved it.
So, let me do this, at the other meeting, let's talk, let me see, because you, the process, he said there's something in there, because I have gone through it, and like I said, I have to submit an artist, you know, drawing.
Right.
Not a picture, a drawing.
What, oh?
Well, you said, let's talk after the meeting, and maybe I'll know if I already stayed.
Can you get, can you get an artist to do a drawing?
The artist is already there. But what you should do is ask for a report from Susan Painter. If they already approved it, then they have seen enough to approve. Now why do I need anything additional?
So they approved, sorry, I misunderstood, they approved the cost, they're drawing, or they're exige you putting Dr. King's.
They approved it all.
Or.
That's right.
Let's talk after the meeting, and like, let's see.
No, I got somewhere, I got somewhere to go, I'm very busy, man, and I've been running back and forth.
Well, I would, let me, I would, I would take it for myself.
I just want to, so you're telling me that the lady from the Arts Council approved it?
Yes.
Without, without, I'm not pulling up, without the, without the artist doing the drawing?
From Glenn Patterson's office, they sent a copy, this copy, to her. The chairman and the commission went over, they went to the wall, they seen what I was, you know, they seen the vision. And she spoke to me on, I called her last week, she said, "We approved it, Mr. Neal."
The vision, Mr. Neal, you said vision, or the drawing, the vision?
No, she had, she had this. She had this. She had this, so Dr. King is over here, where we want to put the drummer at, because there was damage on the wall. So we want to improve it and bring it to the, bring it up.
And I agree, I want to speak to that one.
So here's what I'd like to do. I'd like for you to get a report from Susan Painter, because they are the people who, they're the people who are the experts. Once she told me and told the artist that we had what we need, of course we did. And it's really simple. And I'm insulted, because my reputation is one of excellence.
I would, I would, I would.
You know, I didn't, you know, and I would, I just want to keep staying in good spirit.
I would follow up for you, Mr. Neal.
I've been spoke to Council Galati about it ahead of time, so we didn't have to get to this. Some people just love to fight.
I would follow up, Mr. Neal, thank you.
Thank you. So, you tell me, I hope by the next meeting.
We will, I guarantee you.
Because I would hate to think there's a racism.
I see you, I see you.
I would hate to think there's a racism here.
No, no, I think that is city communication, but thank you.
Oh, well, I could consider you all my life.
Hi, I'm Dana Wilkinson from Food and Water Watch. We have an office here on Bayard Street in New Brunswick. And I'm here to talk to you again about passing an ordinance on banning fracking in New Brunswick, and also a resolution in favor of a statewide ban on fracking waste. We're very appreciative of the fact that you already passed in two thousand and eleven a resolution supporting a statewide ban on fracking. And maybe one of you could address why we didn't go from the discussion at the last meeting towards either a resolution or an ordinance, or both?
There was just a few, some questions that some of the members of the council had, and Mr. Walsh.
Walsh, yes.
He was sending us some information, so if we were not, we could require more information.
Which sort of information did you want?
I think it was a little bit more about fracking and New Jersey, trying to think, there was some.
Oh, then Newark Basin.
To explore before making a decision.
Oh, the link to the Newark Basin map?
I agree, so, um, so.
Okay, because.
I'll make it to your map.
Yeah, we believe you received that. Is Mr. Hamilton saying?
He just said that we, they, we received the information.
Well, he said, was the opinion of Legislative Services as far as municipal government could go. And he agreed with Legislative Services, if I could, that the, that the board of supervisors could go beyond, basically, and get a copy of the community's application.
So we have received, so why don't you guys give your information, we can make a formal decision on that later.
Okay, so, um, I think I know what the issue is, that there is cer, you can only act on bans of fracking in the municipality, whereas you have to do a resolution supporting a statewide ban on the waste coming in. But I also, just in the meantime, I brought you a petition that we've gathered on support for both the statewide ban on fracking and on waste, and that is signed by over two hundred folks that we've gathered here on campus and in the community here in New Brunswick. And I also just wanted to impress upon you that since our last meeting, the National Institute of Health has their magazine, including an article on the, just estimating the wastewater impacts from fracking, and I'm just going to read you a couple of lines from it, saying that wastewater produced by fracking for natural gas in the Marcellus Shale is already overwhelming disposal options, and will continue to do so as gas development increases. So just so you're aware, from two thousand and four to two thousand and eleven, the amount of wastewater generated by fracking in the Marcellus increased sixfold. So there is going to be a huge amount of pressure to bring this waste to New Jersey, and that is a very important issue. We have bipartisan support in the legislature, we just need to keep pushing. And I know you can act quickly, as you did today, on your resolution, so I hope you will move forward, hopefully at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll supply, who'd I get?
Anybody else want to address a question to the council? Yes, name and address?
Close of Katniss, Depperson Avenue. Any, last time I was here, I asked about the Rutgers student code of conduct, and if there was any, well, I actually proposed that the council pass a resolution, but that didn't get a response. But I think Mr. Marquette was asked to follow up on something with Rutgers, or the mayor's office. So I was wondering if there's anything new on that.
This one is code of conduct, yeah, and to the council, or some people, I mean, both eight.
We've been in touch with Rutgers, but right now, there's been no more movement on the code of con, student code of conduct at this point. We're constantly in touch with them on this matter. So, as soon as we hear some more, we'll let the council know.
But you, so I can understand that the city took some steps to contact Rutgers and let Rutgers leadership know that there's a problem with certain types of behavior. Obviously, not all behavior, because there's like forty thousand students, and only about three hundred, four hundred of them represented this problem, but Mr. Anderson pointed that out last week. But the city's moving forward with Rutgers on the matter in general.
We have, we have a representative on the, on the committee for the student code of conduct, and I'm in touch with some of the administrators that are also working on it. So they are getting input from the city.
Thank you. I have one last thing. I'd like to commend the New Brunswick Police Department. I sit here in these meetings, and I hear people, you know, complain about them. Last week, two major events took place in the city. One, about fifteen gang members were arrested and charged under, I think, the RICO statute, and were all tied to the homicide that occurred on Fulton Court, the innocent bystander that was shot through the wall of his apartment or townhouse. It was a long investigation, from what I understand. It took some effort from members of the New Brunswick Police Department, the Millsix County Prosecutor's Office, and even the Attorney General's Office, and they came up with what appears to be a good solution in terms of figuring out how to charge this continuing enterprise of gang members. So commend them on that. The other thing, which is more widespread, I think, was the arrest of over twenty-six, twenty-seven people on narcotics trafficking. My understanding from the reports in the newspaper was there was over two kilos of raw heroin, black car heroin, pills, guns, six guns. Money, like, you know, considerable amount of cash, I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cash that was recovered, according to the newspaper. Now, I'm sure that could be a little bit off. I'd like to point out that Mr. Pittman's probably excited about the arrests and the narcotics investigation, because his family lives next door to the house that was like the hub of all of this. So I'm sure as a community activist, he's very happy about the neighborhood being cleaned up. But again, to the New Brunswick Police Department, great job.
Yes, um, you have to answer the back first, and then.
Please, I as well say, from Seventy-Sixth Street. First of all, I'd like to start off by apologizing to the panel of my outburst last, last week, or last time we was here. Because I'm an emotional person, so I get emotional when things like this happen. And, um, you know, first of all, you're right, you know, I want, um, first of all, I want to start off by saying, the reason that I want the mayor to come to this, because if my, if your son got shot at my house, I know you was, I'm not obligated to come and face you, but I'm sure you would want to know, Jose, what happened? Why my son got shot at your house? And there was some type of explanation. So that's the way I feel about the mayor. You know, my son got killed in the streets, this is his house. He's not obligated to come here, but it'd be nice, it shows some professionalism, if he would come and explain what's going on. Another thing is that, you're right, you know, you want to come into, um, New Brunswick Police Department, because they did make a lot of arrests, and on a homicide. And I wish they catch some more people in my son's homicide. But the truth of the matter is, that with all that being done, as we sit right here, and we speak right here, right now, right now, as we speak this moment, is a kid in Robert Wood Johnson Hospital in the trauma center right now, from just getting shot on Trooper Avenue. It just happened five-thirty this evening. The black, the red tape is still out there. So, you know, like, I would hate to say that, you know, you do investigations on things that will benefit the New Brunswick Police Department, because we all know the currencies and large cash that gives them more reason to buy more equipment and, you know, hire more, whatever, whatever. But what happened to the people that, you know, like, my son? You know, the financial, they don't got the financial means to, you know, get their investigation, you know, really going on, like it should be. Don't get me wrong, they're doing what they gotta do. But again, there's a mother today in a hospital, because her son just got shot. Whether what happened, I don't know what happened, but nobody deserves to get shot or killed. So as we speak right now, there's, there is shooting going on in New Brunswick. It just happened five-thirty this evening.
I just want to, um, thank you for apologizing, thank you for doing that, and also, I know that, and I don't know if you have done it, but I don't know if you have tried to contact the mayor's office to get an appointment, but if you have or you have not, Mr. Rashida is here, so I, you know, the meeting, you want to meet with him to get you an appointment with the mayor, because it's just, you want to talk to the mayor, so the mayor has the opportunity.
I don't want to talk to the mayor, I want the mayor.
So because you said that you want to meet.
I want, I want the mayor to show some type of, that he cares. Bring his stuff right here, yeah. I trained a bunch of kids in the boxing gym, I got to lead them to come over here, I don't want to be here.
I understand.
Why can't he do the same thing?
I understand, but I give you the opportunity to make an appointment, and the city council is not the same, sometimes we get confused. City council is what they're talking about, the town hall meeting is something else.
You have a camera here.
Can I finish first?
Okay.
Can I finish first? So there's two different things. The mayor is not, he doesn't have to be at city council's meeting, that's not his role. It's not a town hall meeting. So I'm offering tonight, in front of the camera, in front of everybody, that you meet, talk to Mr. Rashida, and make an appointment with the mayor, because you've been saying that you want to talk to him, that you don't have access to him.
True that, but when kids are getting slaughtered on his city streets, he's not obligated, but I'll tell you what, it'll be a professional thing to do. Instead of hiring, from what I feel, it's probably wrong hiring behind his council. And you guys take it back and back. Show some professionalism, show your face, act like you care about these kids out of the streets, because again, five-thirty this evening, there's another shooting, you know, on Trooper, on Trooper Sanford Street, which is two, three blocks down the street from my house. And again, I have a sixteen-year-old son out there that I have to attack.
Thank you. Mr. Rashida, do the name, Mr. Neal, name and address, please?
To Mel Pippin, Two-Nine-Seventh Street. First, I want to say, I also support the resolution of the Latino kids, as far, I 'm not going to assume that you all are Mexican, but to those of you who are, let's say, happy single for my. But then, wait, 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 there's a downside to that. You know Floyd Mayweather is going to beat the brakes off Robert Guerrero, right? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was just wondering, because I observed this week, I think it was Friday, this Friday, that the city had Bring Your Child Work Day, which was, I seen, like, that was downtown, and I seen a lot of elected officials and city workers who were dressed up, and, you know, had kids running, I think you guys took the kids off to another location, and seen what the city actually does. I was thoroughly impressed. But what I wasn't impressed with was the fact that there was a SWAT team right across the street from City Hall, that had assault rifles on the table, to where these kids could see them. You know, you had, the Millsix County had a task force team that was just waiting, ready, ready, set, to protect the prosecutor that considered blacks to be niggers. I thought that took away from the entire day. I thought that took away from the entire experience. And on that day, to have children down here to see that type of conduct, was embarrassing for me, you from the city, it was embarrassing. You know, for a racist prosecutor to get that. You know, for a racist prosecutor to get that type of protection. And I wouldn't do all that. I'll leave that alone. I'll say that for nothing. I also want to know, you know, it was a question probably for Tom Lachlan, but how many summer jobs? We're already in May, and there's going to be a lot of children running around. You said someone got shot, 5:30, and it's going to increase some of the summer here, kids out of school. I wonder how many summer jobs did you guys produce thus far? You should have, it counts as May now, it's only a month away. I don't know how many summer jobs did you guys produce so far?
I just want to let you know, anything that I would...
We are still in the process of receiving applications. We've received more than 200 job applications for our Summer Play Safe program so far. Slightly more than 60 of those are from teenagers, but we haven't begun to do the interviewing yet. And our program will start July 1st. So I don't have an answer yet in terms of how many of those teenagers that have applied will be hired. I do want to state, though, that the teenagers that we hire for Play Safe will be New Brunswick residents. We do not hire teenagers from other communities. We do hire some adults from other communities, such as teachers in the school system and so on. But the teenagers that we'll hire will be New Brunswick residents.
Thank you. And I just want to add also that there's several different organizations, teams, most who do give us, on the day of the summer. I know the New Brunswick School-based Youth Services Program will be hired over the summer. I think it's time '25, but they also have somebody who's in charge of helping the high school students get employment over the summer, just in charge of that. They have a staff who does that. Also, I know I have a summer program that we, you say our program, but we take 20 kids and we give them a stipend also for the summer, five weeks, while they're participating in our program. So there's a few agencies that are working to, you know, trying to provide employment or some type of employment opportunity for the youth in New Brunswick.
Because I have 10 kids just in the neighborhood, and I probably get them jobs for the summer. I mean, even, I'll get their parents, even if it don't have to come through me, you know, sometimes people are resistant, you know, we... I get their parents to just...
But I put you the information on this new place, Youth Services Program, because they have to do this over, like I said, they look for employment for the kids, and they try to do it in the city. So I would like to call that person. Yes, Mr. Peterson?
Just a couple of other things. You may already know that if they're teenagers enrolled in the New Brunswick schools, they should get working papers from the school, whether it's the high school or the middle school or the Post-Sax Technology High School. That way they get into the system and we have information that will need for them to be hired.
And that's something that this new place, Youth Services Program, in person, will help with this thing, open up, you know, that need that...
Okay. Lastly, my grandfather had a saying, and was, "The only way you can get doodle on your shoes is if you step in." And like Mr. Katniss brought up, there was a big drug rate, say, what, two kilograms of heroin, $150,000 cash. I was going to bring this up, you know, but since he elected, bring it up. Guns, pills, things that have ancient, I think it was a year investigation, which, for one, I want to know how much the city of New Brunswick paid for this investigation. And also, I want to know, being that there's, since there was a major drug bust to that statute, that means obviously there's a lot of heroin addicts in our community. And we can clap and applaud about the drug arrest, now we took men, women, and put them in jail. But where's the, where is the resolution for the heroin addicts that has two kilograms is a lot of heroin that's flooding through our community? So we can clap, and we can say, yay, hooray, the cops did a good job. But what about the heroin addicts? There's heroin addicts in my family. There's heroin addicts, I mean, Mike Beltran's daughter died of overdose. So this is a serious situation, and I don't think we should be clapping for it. I don't think we should pat ourselves on the shoulder, pat ourselves on the back, when we, yeah, we got the drugs off the street, but there's somebody that's going to get right in place and buy another two kilograms. What are we going to do for that? So I mean, we need to stop prying ourselves on the wrong things. I think we should start clapping, and we can take the majority of our community and get them help. Get them, you know, because people, I mean, they're not buying two kilograms just having to sit there, they're selling to people. It's sad when you've got middle schoolers doing hard drugs, cocaine and heroin. It's sad when you've got high schoolers doing hard drugs, cocaine and heroin. We don't know the full potential of our children because drugs are stopping. So we should focus more energy, yeah, it was a good job, okay, it was a good job, and yes, it did, at the next door to my house. But I'd like for him to stand up and say that he's proud of the city for producing a system that's going to stop the half, stop the drug-provoked heroin. So let's say more heroin addicts stop focusing on asthma, because the addicts are still out there. They're still out there, they're still suffering, and they're going to find somebody else to cop from.
Hi. My name is Caitlin Bagacino, and I would also like to speak on what Karina Wilkinson was talking about. Fracking is something that is very dangerous, and it surprises me that in this country, that we are being so desperate for an energy resource that we are willing to put people's lives in danger to be able to have it available. And it also shocks me, too, because I thought that the United States of America, that we were supposed to be innovators. And then I hear that we're digging through mountains, we're contaminating water, and it has been shown in these states where they've been doing fracking for a long time, in Pennsylvania and Texas, that a lot of people are getting sick and that this is a big public health issue, that we're resorting to using something old that's running out. And instead, we could be focusing money on the research that's going on in universities that if projected, or if reached to its full potential, could be projected to be 80% efficient. And cars are currently 30% efficient, maybe 40 at most, on the gas that we have now. So I really think that banning fracking is just a step towards a safer United States, a safer New Jersey, a safer New Brunswick, making sure that our citizens can turn on the tap, take out the water, and it doesn't light on fire, because that's a little scary. Maybe it's cool, you know, to look at it for two seconds, but it's really not the water that I want to drink. And it's also, you know, saying that the United States of America, we need to be innovators. We need to stop relying on this old thing that's not working and that's running out and look into alternative energy, because it is very promising, there are a lot of pursuits. And in other countries like Japan, they are way ahead of us. And I find that to be a shock, because I think if we have the top universities in this country, if we have great students, then why is it that we're not moving forward? So I think that support from New Brunswick would mean a lot to being able to make this go forward. And this is really a step towards protecting our community. So that's what I'd like to say. And I'd like to say that supporting a city ordinance would be a very wonderful thing.
Thank you. Next, Amy Anderson?
Amy Bronstein, Woodbridge Street, New Brunswick. I wanted to echo the support for a fracking waste ban and a ban on fracking. Just last week, there was a dump truck that was rejected from a landfill in Pennsylvania for triggering the radioactivity alarm. It was like many times above the, you know, the safety limit, like, of what, you know, where it can be accepted in a landfill. And they're putting this through our water treatment plants, and it's getting dumped into our rivers and streams. It's radioactive, it's dangerous, and this is something that you guys could all approve on its first reading. And, you know, like, we sent you the information, is it going to be on the agenda next time?
At the next, we need to get some information that we would process, so as soon as we get it, I'm going to try to see if we can put it for the next time.
But can we get it on the agenda, like, for first reading next time?
If we have to, we have to finish the discussion first. And then we could, you know, after the discussion, we couldn't create the discussion that we had at the last meeting, because we needed more information. So we could put it as an item for discussion at the council, and then we move forward from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Edson?
I'll keep this short. As a homeowner, property owner, and business owner and Rutgers alumni, I want to ask the city...
Name my address?
Oh, 257 Powers Street, 278 Sedan, and a few other properties. I asked that...
Me?
Oh, Roy. I'm sorry. My accent, Rutgers, and the city of New Brunswick come down hard on those individuals involved in Delafast. It's, I don't want this to happen again in my city. I really don't. And two, I commend the city council for passing the resolution. I'm looking forward to seeing the talent of New Brunswick in the university that's in the backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Edson, before we close?
Yes. I do have two issues I want to address, but before I start, I wanted to just give my great thanks and commend all the brave young people who came out today to support tuition equity, and also commend the council for taking action so quickly. That was really encouraging to see, and I hope that the bill passes very soon in Trenton. Thanks to all of these folks' help. I think Mr. Sabah, who spoke earlier, really touched on an important issue, which is, you know, violence in our community. I know that there are some bills in Trenton right now to deal with gun violence and, you know, access to guns and things like that. I know that the mayor's not a member of Mayors Against Illegal Guns, but he is, you know, supposedly working with our state legislators. And I wanted to know if the council or the administration has had any input or has any views on these bills that are being debated in Trenton?
I don't, I'm not going to talk about it, because we already spoke about these working and there's some issues with that. But I know that there's some, totally base initiatives happening there, not just for violence itself, just to go with peace and so forth. If Congress hasn't been, bring themselves, you know, there are always two sides of the story, the right and the, can't come up with a, with a best solution to this, I think that this is something that is still new for some people. I personally agree, you know, with stringent control laws, but that's me, Mr. Rashida councilperson. So, but we haven't discussed that, because of it as a council. So personally, that's how I feel, I believe anybody wishes to address the matter. But I know the city has worked, the mayor is very, has been working actively, even though he's so proud of that, the policies that are doing that, but you guys have been working, doing to agis against, you know, for violence. I would think violence is a miracle in all my violence, but does anybody wishes to address this?
Or is violence...
So, hey, just to, let's try to keep the meeting away this way. So, that's all I could tell you.
Okay. You know, I think it would be wise for the council and the mayor to look into those bills that are being kicked around in Trenton.
Thank you.
And throw their support behind the good policies that there are some. I wanted to ask for an update on something that Captain Miller's talked about before, the police auxiliary program. I understand it was another round of interviews and hiring or stuff like that. How'd that go?
There are three auxiliary groups in the academy now, expected to be activated.
Okay. And the original seven members of the auxiliary are still all serving?
Yes.
I believe so, yes.
So we're looking at 10?
10.
Great. I just learned of this shooting that happened in Troop Avenue. Is there any information that is available about that?
Captain Miller?
There was a shooting around 5:30, as I said, ongoing investigation, which has happened. I have very limited information myself right now, and I wouldn't comment any further than that right now.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, several things. At the last, at the last meeting, the last meeting, we discussed the prosecutor who's been in the press, the assistant prosecutor, Mr. Samaro. I know you said you were going to look into that.
I was going to look into it, I was looking into some people that have known her, and then all of a sudden, the article came out in the newspaper, and I read about it, so I was happy to see it, so, but I, that's, I haven't, but there were some people that have not, didn't know about, who aren't working on this state, organization, state, the Latino police officers organization, but I was going to point out what's they're doing, they didn't know, so I was, I had to forward the article to Sam and see if anyone...
Sure. So you're helping spread the word. Is there any update on...
I have no, I have nothing else to say, because I don't have any knowledge of it. So the article, I have a recent feedback just happened that it came out, and I'm trying to find out what's more, because that's the kind of information.
Okay. A few more things to talk about. I think that these meetings really ought to be on television. And I know it's a great step that they're on the internet, and the folks with computers and internet access can watch them on demand, but we do have a cable access channel. It is as simple as delivering the videotape to Scada Way, dropping it off at the Cable Vision Building. And I wanted, you know, I've been talking to the board of ed about doing the same thing and televising their meetings and trying to use that as a way to bring more parents and get more community members involved in the schools and in the district. And they mentioned that they were working with the city on that. And I wanted to ask for an update on when these meetings will be available on television.
Well, as the council, we have, we have individual that talk about, I don't think we have any decision on that yet, but we will revisit that. And just as a sign of maybe when I lose that weight council, but we haven't, we haven't, so it's something that we have not revisited.
I think you look great. But we, I also think that there's really nothing holding us back, and I've asked this question for years.
And I know, and I...
I don't know what the holdup is.
There is, I have to tell you the truth, I haven't revisited the issue, you know, that particular matter with the new council person, so I really don't know how they feel. So I know I, I don't have any issue with it. I think it's a good idea. You talk about it would be a good way for parents to see and to the city to see. I don't think that's, that's necessary, because if I, you know, especially for the Latino parents that don't know the language, so it's not going to be any help, you know, it's not going to help. But I do get that it's, you know, it's kind of the form of a spread, you know, to have the news out, you know, for some sectors of the community that are not able to come out, for whatever reason they make, they come out, they're sick. So, but we haven't explored that, so I will explore it, I will see, and we will revisit the issue, and hopefully I will have an answer for you soon.
Okay, good. Do you think the next meeting, I mean...
Either way, I'm not going to give you the next meeting, but either way, I will give an answer, you know, I will revisit it, and I will keep you updated with stuff like that. And I'm pretty sure you're going to be in there.
I am going to be in there. Just, if you remember, after you were sworn in, it was the first thing I asked you about. And, you know, it was some years ago now, but I do want to...
How old?
Some years. Some years ago?
You might as well, like, you know, all the time, two years.
Okay. Well, I also wanted to talk about another benefit of improving this room. You could turn the table, all five of you could face the public instead of just one. And also, if we have proper video equipment in here, all the other boards that use this room to meet could have their meetings video recorded and made available to the public. There's so many boards and commissions in the city, and I think the general populace doesn't know at all what's going on with those boards, and it'd be a great way to make it easier for people to plug into those. And I think that, to that end, the city also needs to do some work to revive some of those boards and commissions, because just looking at them, many of them are not functioning. For instance, there's a Citizens Taxi Service Council that was created for citizens to, you know, lodge complaints or raise issues about the taxi service that they were being provided, and that commission has not met for about a year. There's also the Cable TV Advisory Council, which has, you know, endorsed having these meetings be on TV, but they haven't had a meeting in two years. There are, in fact, I think maybe only one or two members that are still on the committee. And the Minority Business Enterprise Commission, I know I've talked, I believe, before about maybe revamping that, that has no members, has not been functioning for years. The Human Relations Commission, which, my understanding, was created, you know, out of, out of the incident with, you know, police, you know, not behaving properly, and that was a sort of remedy that was proposed and implemented, and now it's dead. It hasn't done anything yet. And I think the last one I want to touch on is the Student City Advisory Committee. With all this talk of, you know, the craziness on Delafast Street, I think that the Student City Advisory Committee would be a really, a great way to tackle that problem and include students and the community members, and that committee is dead and dysfunctional, hasn't done anything in over a year. So I would just humbly ask, you know, what is the status on these commissions and who's responsible for making sure that they're functioning? Don't they report to the council?
I have no, I'm not able to respond to you. I will find out information on it in the next meeting, I would try to answer.
Thank you. One last question, were there any more arrests in the Delafast situation?
Any more arrests in the Delafast?
The investigation continued on. There has been one more arrest and two more sets of charges on individuals who we're looking to find right now. The investigation is continuing.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Anderson, you have something to say?
A few things. I think it's important for us to work together, certainly the young man over there that's interested in the health issues, we certainly are, and all the drugs. And I think it's, we have to work together with the police, with the mental health institutions, with the children, with the schools, et cetera. So I think that's really important, that we all work together. The other young man sitting behind him, I do think it's important that the, as I've The other young man sitting behind him, I do think it's important that the, as I've talked to the city before, bricks not be used in streets, especially if you go all the way up by George Street to Riley Lane. Those bricks in streets are not good. You want to talk about tar, or you want to talk about pressed concrete, those are the good things, but I don't think we should have the bricks in the, in the streets or anything like that. And lastly, the young man in the back there, I personally do not want the mayor at a city council meeting. He can have his own meeting, so that's just my opinion.
Thank you. This time, Amy Anderson?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Barley?
Hi.
Council President Escobar?